Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Board of East Central Independent School District on April 16th, 2020, beginning at 6:30. This meeting will be conducted by video conference in accordance with the Governor's Authorization concerning Suspension of Certain Open Meetings Law Requirements for COVID-19 Disaster. Members of the public may access the meeting as it happens by going to www.ecisd.net and clicking on the Board of Trustees tab. Then click the link to view the 4.16.2020 ECISD Board Meeting, or you may view the recording at a later date by following the same steps. A quorum of the members of the Board will participate in the meeting and will be audible to the public. Members of the public may submit comments no later than 5:30 PM on April 16th, 2020 by clicking the following link and completing the Public Comments from ECISD Board Meeting, April 16th, 2020, Public Comments Forum. The Public Comments Forum link can also be found on the website under Board of Trustees. With that, we will call this meeting to order. Mr. and Ms. Barrientos, can you have a roll call, please?
Yes, Sir. Del Brizel, President. Victor Garza.
Here.
James Moke.
Here.
Monique Presses.
Here.
Steve Bryant.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Barrientos. We're going to move on to the prayer and pledge. Mr. Toscano, who do we have tonight?
Yes, Sir, we have Ms. Coles.
There ahead. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for these leaders. We pray that you will watch over everyone in our community and keep us safe and healthy during this difficult time. We pray that you will keep us strong, even though we must stay somewhat apart. We pray that you will watch over our staff and students and keep them safe. Lord, we pray that you will give us good judgment as we work through our meeting tonight, and we pray that you will guide our leaders during this time to make good decisions for our community. We pray all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. I like the flag. All right, we'll move on to item three. Mr. Toscano, do we have any words and recognitions tonight? No?
No, Sir, not tonight.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to item four, Public Comments. Mr. Toscano?
Mr. President, we do not have anyone signed up for Public Comments this evening.
All right, well, that takes care of item four. Item five, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Toscano?
Sir, trustees, in your electronic packet, you'll see this month's Personnel Report. It begins in your packet on page eight, and will be a couple of things in there. Actually, in your miscellaneous packet, you have a hard copy as we've made some revisions and some additions since it was put in your electronic packet, so you won't actually follow along in your miscellaneous packet. You'll see on the first page of the miscellaneous packet that we've had no renovations in retirees from last month, and we have not hired any new employees on last month's report. But what you'll also see more importantly in the report is this is the time of year where the district brings all of our contract recommendations for next year for both multi-year and single-year contracts at the district level, as well as campus by campus, and that comprehensive report is in your miscellaneous packet for your review. And of course, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. If you'd like any additional information about any of the contracts being presented in this month's report, please let me know, and we'll get you any additional information that you might need.
I have a quick question, Mr. Toscano. I was looking at the contract renewals. Why is it that Ms. Pingway and other administrators are under the professional educator list versus the administrators? Is that just what they're labeled as, or is that their actual title?
Ms. Sanders is also at the meeting. Would you like to comment on that, Ms. Sanders?
Yes, Sir, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, Ms. Barrientos, you were kind of breaking in and out on mine, and I apologize. Would you mind restating your question?
Sure, no problem. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, ma'am, I can. Thank you.
Okay, I just asked Mr. Toscano on, I noticed on some of the administrators, I don't know if that's their title technically, like Ms. Pingway, Mr. Trosper, they were under the professional educator list versus, I guess, the top ones?
Right. Yes, ma'am, so you're talking about our APs, our Assistant Principals. Yes, ma'am, they do fall under the campuses, our principals, since they receive multi-year contracts. Our Assistant Principal receive one-year contracts, so they're just placed under the campuses. That way, they're with this particular campus that they're associated with, and so really, it's just a difference in contract between the Principals and the Assistant Principals is why we have them separated.
Okay, awesome. That's all I wanted. I figured that one. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We good? Everybody good? Move on to item B, Student Services Update. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, Sir, trustees, staff from the Student Services Department have prepared a goal update for the Board's information, and you have the ability to view this in a few ways. We're in the process of sharing. Ms. Coles' screen will have electronically, will be electronically presenting this report as it's presented to you by Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Hart. But in your miscellaneous packet, you also have a hard copy for you to follow along. I know that the other day, as we tried to look at this, it was a little bit small and difficult to read electronically, so we wanted to provide both options for you so you could follow along as it's presented. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Hart.
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, President Massingale, board members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to highlight our Student Services team. We have a tremendous team at Student Services that listens to the needs of our students, families, and staff, and we connect them to the appropriate resource to meet their needs. We continuously work with all campus and department staff to eliminate any barriers that present in a way that impacts student learning. We're all trained and prepared to listen and respond. We know that it takes the both to get a child from pre-graduation. Priority one. A standard of care was created this year in collaboration with administrators, counselors, and nurses. Students identified through EC cares for trauma-informed services are being provided services according to their needs. Also, in regards to attendance, all campuses are hosting attendance forums to educate the caregiver on the importance of attendance and show various ways to monitor attendance. In addition, increased collaboration seemingly has had a positive effect on discipline referrals as ISS, out-of-school suspensions, DAP placements, they've all seen a decrease since last year.
Our counselors work persistently with their campus leadership teams to plan, identify, and service student needs. They have completed social and emotional learning training and youth mental health first-day training, which equips them with the tools needed to respond to students in need. Counselors provide group and individual sessions, which provide students with strategies to keep them successful in the classroom. Our school counselors also participate in the Critical Incident Response Cluster through Region 20. Our school nurses continue to provide much-needed health and wellness care in our school clinics daily. We work with families continually to create the best learning environment for students with medical needs. Campus nurses make contact with families to ensure that the vision and hearing needs for students are addressed so that they are able to function at their full potential in the classroom. All of our EC school nurses are trainers for the Stop the Bleed curriculum. Besides training staff, we have trained numerous students, eighth grade and up, on how to respond to emergency situations.
Priority number two. We are continuously visiting with our staff to identify areas of needed support. At this time, we are on target to retain 90% of our staff.
Priority three. Our district has partnered with over 65 organizations to provide meaningful ways to service our families. For example, University Health Systems provides medical services like the mobile vaccine clinic and has also donated additional Stop the Bleed training kits and emergency kits for our campuses. Communities and schools have been added to several campuses to provide additional resources for our families and students. We have partnered with United Way to create EC Cares 211 cards. San Antonio Police Department established a Handle with Care program. We partnered with them on this program. At the discretion of the responding police officer, key district personnel will be alerted if a student has encountered a traumatic incident involving law enforcement. Trauma doesn't stop at 4:00 PM, and it doesn't believe in holidays. This is a great system and a cooperation between ECPD, SAPD, EC, SO, and ECISD to alert key campus staff before the next school day that an event occurred outside of school. This passed December on a Saturday morning at the start of Christmas break. Key district personnel were alerted by SAPD that a terrible accident occurred within the East Central community. Within that hour, appropriate district staff, campus principal, and campus counselor were contacted to inform them of the incident and provide necessary support. Our Student Services Team is ready to listen and serve outside of the school day. It takes all of us.
In our response to COVID-19 during this unprecedented time to meet the needs of our East Central community on a weekly basis, our Student Services Team goes grocery shopping, sorts and packages the groceries, and delivery teams pick up the care package each Thursday to distribute to families within their campus. At this time for Week Five, we have served 549 families. We embrace the opportunity to get to serve our students and families during this difficult time we are EC. Priority number four. We need continuously to ensure we are using resources effectively, working on things that impact kids, money going into the right places to impact classroom performance, and to identify any gaps and buggies.
The Student Services Department continues to strive to provide the highest quality of customer service. From enhanced communication to active listening, we go the extra mile to provide for the needs of our school community. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation.
Trustees, following that presentation in your electronic packet on page 31, but also in your miscellaneous packet, you have another document that you'll see follows every board presentation that has a little bit more detail. So in the second piece to this, the document takes the annual results measures, which were presented at a high level this evening, and it gives more detail about what the department is monitoring, as well as what strategic activities they're undertaking to achieve those annual results measures. Furthermore, it also details some of the data that they're tracking as indicators for the degree to which they're achieving their intended outcomes. And so, we felt like this would be a way to get the big ideas, potentially what they intended to do, what problems they were trying to solve, how well we're doing it, what we're doing about it if we're not tracking the degree to which we intended to. And so, that information is there for you as well. I know you've had an opportunity to see that, and if you have any questions, myself or the team would be happy to answer. And like always, if after this meeting you have additional questions or would like additional informations pertaining to the programming in the Student Services Department, we'd certainly get that to you immediately.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you all served over 549 families, and I greatly appreciate that because I know that was probably all of ours concern. Are the staff that's going out to get groceries, are they, obviously, we're giving them PPE, right? I mean, they wear masks and they're taking care of themselves, correct? They're not being exposed?
Correct. Yeah, we go masks and gloves, and we have six different teams that go over to different locations throughout San Antonio and surrounding very county.
And you all actually get to go in earlier than the regular customers or not? You all have to just go in at regular times?
Yeah, unfortunately not. We do get some looks, but it's, you know, it's for a good cause.
Right, right, right.
But no, unfortunately, we don't get any special treatment. They're very understanding, the cheers.
And so, we're just dropping off the food at their porches or the family's front porch, at their doors? They're not actually going into their homes?
Correct. They ring that doorbell, and they basically want to put eyes on kids and families if there's any additional accessory needs, and when even their groceries are with them, no contact. And if need be, we have door hangers in the event that no one answers the door, to where they'll contact through Google Voice, their counselor on their campus. That will make sure if they may have moved, we'll get that care package to the next, as the following. And so, it's a control chaos, right? So every Monday, we meet, and we get our families prepared, and we take that, each campus just to contribute to that list. And so, each campus has created their high-needs families that we go out to every time on a weekly basis. But yeah, we're going to make contact. We don't know how, even though kids, you know, bless our heart, it's a tough situation, and we're just happy to be helping.
Definitely. Yeah, and I greatly appreciate that. So, I know I've read articles that child abuse unfortunately has increased due to kids being at home. I mean, you do, like, you just mentioned, we do have eyes on those kids that are, I'm not saying it's happening in our district, but we do have eyes on those kids that may be at risk.
Yes, we have multiple layers of support. Each campus, their teachers are calling those students, and when they're not able to make contact, then they get with their counselor. Now, we include them on the, they may not get groceries, for example, but they're doing a wellness talk just to see how they're doing. And so, at times, it's just a hello, and sometimes they don't need to add them to the list, they need this, this, and this for the phone.
Is that the same for, like, these kids that are in school suspension or have behavior problems? Are those type of?
Yes, so currently, our students in alternative school, they're being serviced by our own staff, and so, through Ingenuity. And so, we've created a Google Classroom through their, the high school, Ms. Graber and her team have done that, so they're checking out all the students, all the progress at the high school level. And so, yeah, we still, that doesn't change, that they could have still participated in the meal program. They're still our babies.
Okay, perfect. And then, just sorry, one last question. Who's being surveyed on this mid-year survey? I know you've mentioned it before. Is it just parents, staff on your mid-year survey analysis?
Yes, or staff.
Okay. All right, awesome. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, ma'am.
One other group that's assisting with this is our community and schools partners, so they're also assisting us to leverage resources and connect families with the community resources across the city of San Antonio as well as we identify those needs. And the team that has been volunteering has been doing a fantastic job.
Yes, it's Del Brizel. Thank you, Claudia, for those questions that the nurse was going to ask. I really want to just feel good about the fact that everybody has what they need. Are there some areas where maybe that the community may want to, you know, to help in some way? And I know that can probably be limited, but I just wanted to ask that question so that if anyone had a desire to do whatever that means or whatever that looks like within the confines of the safety and all of that, that that would be available. And then, I have another question to tack on to that because I've talked to some other educators, and as you can imagine, I am inundated with health information, and I had to keep up even with my license with all of this stuff with COVID-19. So, I'm glad Claudia asked the nurse question, and I don't have to do that. But are there areas, oh, rather, are there places where the kids that maybe don't have access to, let's just say, in a home where the internet may be cut off? And I know we send in the Chromebooks and those kind of things, but I thought I understood, someone said that even Spectrum or whatever was giving people, like, free internet service for a month or something. Are we able to tap into all of those various different resources that can help them, help the children?
So, Dr. D is also on the call, and he can add to this with the most current information, but we figured out pretty early on that there were many families across the district that did not have connectivity or devices, and so, we did deploy devices for the better part of a week and a half, and in some cases, we're still doing that as we come across those needs today. We also purchased USB hotspots through AT&amp;T that we've been distributing as well. We purchased 1,000, and I believe we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 to 600 that we've distributed. Of course, again, Dr. D can give us an update to the day. The other thing that we did was we attached external hotspots to all of our campuses, and we open our gates from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So families who do have the ability to get to any campus in the community, there's a map that has been distributed across the community that shows the area of the campus that is hot, if you will, so that they could connect in that way, and that also is for staff. We have some staff that have connectivity issues that we've been able to connect so that they could connect with children. And so, we've been making headway, and as we come across circumstances where maybe one device wasn't enough because there were multiple children in the home, we distributed multiple devices. And so, case by case, the team is staying connected and identifying additional needs, and then we're doing all we can to leverage resources to get those needs met. One thing that we also learned, to your point about Spectrum, is from the original device request for USB hotspots to the time that we started to distribute them, there were many families who needed hotspots who were able to connect their home through some of those other resources, which we also shared with the community in multiple ways to make sure that they knew that those options were available during this time. So, thank you for the question. And Dr. D, if you'd like to add anything to that with more recent information, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, your numbers are actually very accurate. That's pretty much where we are on the Internet access devices. We do have the Information Technology Building open every day from 8:00 to 4:00. I have one advanced tech there, and then I have one campus tech, so that if teachers or students have problems with their equipment, that they can bring it in and still get it fixed during all the stuffs going on. We actually, for the Internet devices, we have set up outside where they can fill out the forms, so that we're only having pretty much one person in the building at a time. We have the masks for everybody, we have the wipes for the hands, we have gloves. So we're trying to set it up so it's real easy for the staff to take care of things without a lot of contact, so we can still provide those services. They can come for the hotspots, the Chromebooks go through the campuses. We even have one of the campuses that's borrowed some Chromebooks from another campus because they gave out all of theirs.
Thank you so much.
We all good? Thank you, Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Hart. That was, well, good information on the update. Appreciate that a lot. So with that, I think we'll move on to item C, Benefits, and Purchasing Department update. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, Sir, trustees, in your electronic packet on page 38, you can follow along, or also in your miscellaneous packet, you have a hard copy of the Business Benefits and Purchasing Department's presentation, and also about to share the screen. And then you have both parts. You have the presentation, and then you also have the more detailed document with a little bit more details about what they're monitoring, what strategic activities they're undertaking that they'll be reporting on today, as well as the data that they've been tracking as indicators of the degree to which they're meeting their goals. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Burns and Mr. Morgan.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Massingale, Mr. Toscano, and board trustees. As Mr. Toscano said, this is Shannon Burns, and Matt Morgan and I will be co-presenting for the 1920 Scorecard for the Benefits and Purchasing Department. For priority one, teaching and learning environment, benefits and purchasing will develop and have 100% fidelity of implementation of finance systems so that the teaching and learning environment is highly productive academically. The Business Department Leadership Team meets weekly under the direction of the CFO to collaborate and discuss best practices in implementing processes and procedures. The district received a clean audit for the 1819 fiscal year and will continue to maintain best practices to achieve a clean audit for 1920. Our second measure for effective teaching and learning environment is to have 100% of sub-departments in the business office successfully implement the Navigate Prepare app to increase emergency operation preparedness for the central office. In January of 2020, the central office staff downloaded the Navigate Prepare app and received training. Can everybody hear me okay? Ashley, you want to move to priority two? Thank you. Okay. Priority two, our goal is to successfully meet 80% of annual results measures by successfully implementing Continuous Growth Plan. As part of the Continuous Growth Plan process, the Benefits and Purchasing Departments work with the CFO and Business Leadership Team to monitor progress towards annual results measures on a quarterly basis, and adjustments are made as necessary. Our second goal is to retain 83% of staff across campuses and departments. Among many factors that contribute to employee retention, the Benefits Department continues to constantly evaluate the employee benefits offered by the district. For next year in 2021, we will be adding an optional hospital indemnity plan for our employees. We are replacing our vision plan from Itopia to Ameritas. This change is going to expand the provider network to include major retailers such as Costco and Walmart, and will guarantee our down rates for the next two plan years. We're adding legal protection coverage and changing our accident coverage for an enhanced plan design. And lastly, our most important benefit is medical coverage. As a district of innovation, the district has the option to offer a second coverage alongside the TRS Active Care Plan. At this time, the district has requested but not yet received our TRS Active Care claims history from September of 2016 through May of 2019. Obtaining this status is crucial to determine the district's ability to make a decision whether or not we have the ability to obtain a competitive and sustainable alternative health plan. We will continue to monitor and evaluate as developments occur. For the 2021 school year... For the 2021 school year, TRS Active Care is changing from Aetna to Blue Cross Blue Shield and next year's rates and plan designs should be available next week. The benefits department, under the guidance of the superintendent and CFO, will continue to monitor and evaluate employee benefits to ensure we are competitive with other districts. Okay, so now I'm going to turn it over to Matt Morgan to continue with the presentation.
Good evening. Priority three, inclusive and collaborative partnership. The goal is to increase the number of mutually beneficial partnerships and maintain 95% of these existing partnerships provide quality service at a great value. Shannon and I collaborate with the CFO to review agreements, contracts or MOUs for these engagements in order to mitigate risk and liability and protect immunity. In addition to partnerships, the district engages services with vendors to improve efficiency and effectiveness. One partnership is with Optimazon for copier and printer solutions. Prior to the COVID-19 school closure, the district was on target to save approximately $175,000 for the 1920 fiscal year. Copier usage based on pages per student per day was down by 8% and overall usage was down by 6%. Priority four, resources and operational excellence. Our goal is to have 100% of subdepartments maintain asset management and evaluate the budget alignment to the needs assessment to build a baseline for future budgeting. Asset management is discussed weekly at the business department meeting. A position was reallocated to assist with textbook and curriculum inventory. Full-on inventory management software has been implemented and utilized to streamline processes and provide accessibility for the departments to their inventory reports. Additionally, the director of risk management and the executive director of facility management work in collaboration to reduce injuries and improve safety. In the summer of 2017, the departments engaged TASB to implement the Scholar Safety Program. Since inception, the district has decreased workers' compensation claims for three consecutive years. This year, we're on target to have the lowest claims cost since 2012. The campus and department's safety coordinators should be recognized for their hard work to implement the safety program. Mid-year survey results, although we were pleased with our mid-year results, the benefits and purchasing departments will continue to strive for 100% in all categories. We thank you for your time and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
A quick question, Matt, on the TASB Scholar Safety Program. I'm glad that the name decreased. What changed? Was it just additional training?
I'm going to defer to Shannon on that.
I think overall awareness has been the most critical factor in the program. The scholar program is basically has seven components, management, commitment, hazard analysis, record keeping, training, safety inspections, accident investigations, program review and revision. So there's a lot of factors that go into what can cause employee injuries. So we have quarterly safety meetings with all of our safety coordinators. We've gone all over the seven steps. Ms. Cabasos and I meet with them quarterly. And I really have to give credit a lot to the department's safety coordinators and the campus safety coordinators. They take that information and they take it back to their department or their campus and it has really had an impact on the number of claims that we've had.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Burns.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No. Thank you, Ms. Burns and Mr. Morgan. I appreciate all that information and we're going to move on to item D, upcoming events. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir. Trustees, in your miscellaneous packet, you have your calendar for April and May. Obviously, very uncertain with regard to whether we'll be able to return prior May 4th or even after May 4th. The governor is slated to have a press conference tomorrow and speak to a couple of key topics that I understand the president is also speaking to this evening. And that regarding the economy and a strategic effort to get the economy moving again while at the same time thinking about safety, flattening the curve and all the things that we've all been collectively participating in. So as it relates to school opening or extending closures, he's going to speak to that directly as well. And so we may have more information tomorrow about the likelihood of a return or when we'll be able to return. But given all that, the month of April and May, as you know, are usually very busy with events. In April, you'll see at the end of the month, we usually have superintendent student of the month event. We are currently programming for appropriately recognizing those students and their families for that really significant recognition. We're going to have a plan to do that virtually and appropriately. And in the event we're not able to return, which at this particular point by governor's order, we're not able to return prior to May 4th, we're anticipating that that is going to have to be done virtually. So we're in planning and developing that program. In May, we'll continue to see several events that we're unlikely to be able to fulfill. On the 18th, you see the Academic Achievement Awards, which is a very significant annual event for students at the high school to be recognized for their academic achievement. It's also one way that we recognize a lot of seniors for some of their academic superlatives. The high school is working on a Plan B in the event that we're not able to return by May 18th. If we are able to return prior to that, our hope is that we'll be able to pull that event off the way that we traditionally done. And so we'll have a Plan A and Plan B again to make sure that those students' efforts academically do not go unrecognized. And then moving on, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is on the 21st and that's typically our service awards, which is a really big event for us. We're going to go ahead and push that date to a later date in hopes that we can actually have that event face to face as we do want to recognize all of our employees for service to the district to include this year's retirees as we always have in the past. And so we're hoping that by pushing it, we will be able to do that in a manner that is not virtual. And then lastly, on the 30th, you'll see that we had graduation scheduled and we're working on several plans for graduation. The thing about graduation is our first big hurdle was that the Coliseum has been slated as an overflow hospital, as you're all aware, and that is where we typically would have graduated. And so as a result, we knew early on that that's not likely to be accessible even if we were to return to school. And so we've been working on a virtual option. We've been working with San Antonio Education Partnership and KSAT 12. And most recently, we've been working locally on something that we're really excited about. And I'll hold on to that publicly right now, but Ms. Press has had a fantastic recommendation that we're running with. And should we end up having to do graduation that way, I think that the community and the students, most importantly, will be really pleased with what we end up putting together to appropriately recognize them for that fantastic accomplishment. And so more to come on those details. And again, more to come about closures being extended or being able to return to school. You know, it's a week to week thing, but we're hoping to get some more definitive information tomorrow from the governor. We're hoping to be happy to answer the questions about what's on the calendar otherwise.
Mr. Toscano, just to clarify, on the board meeting on the 21st, you're not pushing the meeting, you're just pushing the service awards, correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. That's all I had.
So one thing that we, yeah, one thing we may consider, and I'll defer to you, Mr. Massengill, between now and then, is we usually do that, we would have done that at the Patterson given that we were recognizing a lot of folks. We may consider that being in the boardroom. And again, that's all assuming that we're able to convene. And if not, there's a possibility that we may end up in this kind of format. More information, obviously, to follow as we learn more about what's possible.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Nope. All right. We'll move on to item six, action to do. A proposal for asphalt replacement at Sinclair Elementary. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir. Trustees, as you're aware, the board did give us approval to move to competitive steel proposals for an award method for the asphalt replacement at Sinclair. We have received proposals and tabulated and Mr. Morgan will present those to the board tonight and I'll follow with a recommendation for your consideration. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir. The district received five asphalt bids ranging from $377,453 up to $474,590. And after evaluation of all proposals with district staff and with the district engineer, the district is prepared to recommend consideration of board approval for the, from the bid to all-in construction at a price of $377,453.
Sir, anybody have any questions?
I have a question. Do you have experience with all-in construction?
We do not. We spent a significant time researching their source projects. One of the biggest school project they worked on was they did the Comal ISD High School Number Four located in Garden Ridge. Barley Cock was the general contractor. They had great things to say about them. I talked to the director of construction for Comal County, or sorry, for Comal ISD. They were pleased with them. The city of Laverne has used them the last three years for their paving projects. The city of Florisville had used them and had some issues with warranty and they were pleased with the outcome of that. They were taken care of right away. The city of Castroville, without a doubt, gave them a glowing recommendation. China Grove, the city of China Grove, used them for a one-street paving project. The city manager had some concerns with their communication, but in all in all, it worked out well and the engineer was pleased with their performance. They've done two projects for the city. One is, has not gone so well and it was difficult to get information from them, but the other city project worked out really well in the area of Alamo Ranch. So based on the price, based on the majority of references that we did check, we felt like it was the best value for the district at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Just want to know.
Yes, sir.
So I have a quick question, Mr. Morgan. I know you always do make sure that we have something in writing, but then they've done a good job at certain times. Do you feel like they're kind of sketchy or should we make sure that we have them in a really cast iron? I know there'll be a contract or whatever, but have you discussed with them? Are they going to be available for communication? Are they going to be ready for any problems that we have or?
Since communication was a concern from some of our references, we've talked with our engineer as well as the project coordinator from our engineering firm, as well as Julio Alonso, who will be the district's project coordinator, and as well as Linda Cabasos, the executive director. And we all know that we're going to be visiting the site regularly and the contract will be our typical standard contract. But we just know that since we do not have personal experience with them, that we're going to do our due diligence to communicate effectively and be present on site. That's why we feel comfortable with this recommendation.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir.
When would this project start and how long would it take?
So right now, the project is slated for June 1st, which was when, or the first week of June when school was originally set to be out. If we get word that the school will not get back in session, we have some flexibility to start the project earlier. The projected timeline for completion is mid-July.
Mid-July. Now, we're talking about the parking lot, we're talking about visitors and faculty parking lot, resurfacing that, both of those parking lots, am I right?
Correct. It'll be both the east side and the west side of the parking lot. We just did the loop around the school, so that will, that will not be in the scope of work. They're going to beef up some asphalt on both sides for bus traffic along the bus lane, address drainage issues, create some accessibility on the west side so as students or parents are coming up from the sidewalk on the west side, they'll be able to have accessible all the way to the sidewalk that leads in front of the cafeteria.
Sounds good. And the striping is all included into this price?
Yes, sir. We do have striping. It's going to be a complete replacement, so there will be new striping as well as some power washing to some of the existing concrete work that has a little age on it that we feel like can be rebuilt, replenished or refurbished with a, with a good power washing.
Okay. All right. Now, you mentioned it was supposed to start on June the 1st, but, and so if that doesn't happen, then we're going to, what, that, those dates are going to change, am I right?
So the latest start will start is that first week of June?
Okay.
If, for some reason, the school closure extends all the way for the rest of the regular calendar year, we have the opportunity to start the project even sooner.
Even sooner, okay. And we're talking about $375,000 is what you said? Can I, can you repeat that? Thank you so much. Appreciate that affirmation.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? No? All right.
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the proposal for asphalt replacement at Sinclair Elementary for all-in construction for $377,453 as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent for asphalt replacement at Sinclair to all-in construction. Do I have a motion?
Motion. So move.
You have a motion from Mr. James Mulkey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Victor Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Move on to actually item B, teacher data portal of Texas Assessment Management System waiver. Mr. Toscano? Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's my bad. Reading the wrong line. Item B, DEA local policy update.
Trustees, on page 48 in your electronic packet, you'll see board policy DEA local refers to compensation and benefits or compensation plan. And as you're aware, last month, the board did approve or adopt a resolution which allowed for staff to continue to be compensated during closure. In addition to that, it allowed for staff who were going to be asked to come to work due to the nature of the work that they were doing, like child nutrition, for example, to be paid premium pay. Now, by adopting the resolution and giving me the authority to do that, we are within the full scope of policy and the law for us to do that. But for the purposes of potentially receiving some reimbursement through FEMA, legal recommended that we make an amendment to this policy to add what you'll see on page 49, which is very specific language around premium pay. And so essentially, what we're asking tonight is to consider adding that language about premium pay to our local policy so that we dot all i's and cross all the t's with regard to our future application for some FEMA funding because of the circumstances that we're in right now and the... and the additional costs that we'll be incurring for premium pay during the closure.
How long does it normally take for that FEMA reimbursement to come in? I know they're probably inundated with request claims, but, and I've heard stories, but do you know, do you know, or?
Yeah, Ms. Burns is on the call. Historically, Ms. Burns, I don't know if you have any historical experience with such of a situation, I, I do not have any firsthand knowledge. I, like you, have heard a lot of language around the time that it takes to get that reimbursement. I've also heard that if we don't dot our i's and cross our t's, that we may not get all of our funding.
Right.
So, Ms. Burns, would you like to add to that?
Yes, Roland, when we had FEMA from a few years ago from a hurricane, it took several months for us to get any money. In fact, it might have taken almost a year. But we have gotten everything ready to go on the portal with the FEMA for now. I'm the head designated person, and then Shannon Burns is the secondary. And so we're in the process of trying to enter our data because we just now finished our first bi-weekly payroll to put that data in there, so we're going to be working on trying to submit that just as soon as we can.
Thank you, Ms. Burns, I appreciate that, I figured you'd be on top of it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, Mr. Tuskano?
Yes, Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the DEA local revisions as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the DEA local proposed revision. Do I have a motion?
So move.
You have a motion from Claudia Barantos, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Del Brazil? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, TT tests and T-PASS appraisal waivers for 2019, 2020 school year. Mr. Tuskano?
Trustee, this is in reference to evaluations of teachers and administrators, as well as alternative appraisals, which are how we appraise our paraprofessionals, auxiliary staff. Due to the closure, many of our appraisals will, we will not be able to complete. And so the agency has released a waiver application, and the requirements were that we took the waiver request to our District Executive Improvement Council for review, consideration, and a vote. The DEIC did vote unanimously to approve bringing this forward for your consideration, and what it enables us to do is have some grace, some flexibility, if you will, for any evaluations that had been completed prior to spring break, then those are okay. Any of those that we were unable to complete, then we'll focus on certain aspects of the evaluation for which we did have enough observational data and performance data to to assess. But that we did not have to complete, the complete evaluation if we did not have the appropriate observational and performance data to do so with regard to all domains of the evaluations. And so with your approval tonight, we'll send this forward to the agency, and the agency essentially, so long as the DEIC approves, and ultimately, the board of trustees approves, they're going to approve because of the fact that we're closed and our inability to complete all evaluations as we would normally have been able to do so. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
All due respect, it's not, this isn't going to come back and invite us in the you know what, I mean, obviously, we're under a, a state of emergency by the governor, I, I just want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, which I know we are, but just, I want to ask.
Yes, ma'am, we followed all timelines and all guidance by the agency, as well as been in consultation with our attorney all along the way to make sure that we were doing right by all of our staff, as well as meeting all of our statutory obligations. And this is just one more step that we need to do in order to meet the requirements in this current context for the agency with regard to teacher evaluations, and it does pass legal muster as well.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
So, Mr. T, the teachers that have already been evaluated, we're going to use their evaluation, am I right?
So based on the timeline, they're, all their evaluations have not been completed. And so with regard to teachers, domain four is the domain that talks about their professional conduct, essentially. All things other than student performance. So those are the areas that we're going to focus on because we won't have any student performance data, at least the state accountability data. And, you know, any additional details that Ms. Sanders has, if you want to add to this, Ms. Sanders, for the board's information, please do.
Yes, sir, and as Mr. Tuskano said, we've really followed all the guidelines that have been set forth by TEA guidance, going through legal as well. And in my contact with other HR directors in the area, they have all applied for the waiver as well, they're focusing on domain four. And that just seems to be what, how everybody's proceeding at this point. And again, like Mr. T said, just focusing on that last domain, since we don't have the student evidence at this point completed.
Could you, talk about domain four? What's, what's in domain four, can you let us know that?
Yes, sir, so basically, domain four just talks about professional communication. So that would include student communication, communication with students, community, really talking about following legal guidelines for the district, district policy. All of those types of things fall under domain four for our teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Why can't we just use their last year's evaluation, we can't do that?
No, sir, every year, once they have an evaluation for that year, that data is used for that particular school year to finalize.
I understand that, but since we're going through this crisis and we're getting a waiver, you know, I thought it was maybe some type of circumstances, you know?
Yes, sir, and so in the guidance we have, it didn't indicate that that would be something that we could possibly use for the school year to try to, to close out evaluations in this manner.
Okay.
Well, sorry, that's probably impossible though, because some, some teachers might be put on a growth plan, correct? So there's no way to base it off of last year's evaluation anyway, correct?
You're right, I mean, it's, every year is different, and so, you know, we do have situations where teachers could be performing well one year, and for whatever reason, the following year maybe having some, may struggle some and, and need some need some assistance for growth, so you're right, Ms. Barantos, that would be one of the reasons we could see some, why that might not work.
But still, with school, we, we've been out of school since spring break, a teacher had an opportunity to, what to improve within the next two or three months, am I right?
Yes, sir, you're correct, yes.
But they won't get that opportunity.
Well, it'll be difficult, that's something difficult to monitor, the way that we're distance learning at this time. I mean, we can monitor whether they're communicating with students, whether they're looking at plans, whether they're planning. But to actually be able to see the growth implemented in the classroom, that is, it is difficult to, to monitor that.
I understand that very much, so, but we're doing this crisis also, I, I don't know, you know, you're going to evaluate them, I don't know why we couldn't just give all of them a satisfactory, but I guess that's impossible to do because we know their history, I guess, huh?
That, to some extent, yes, and that's really why we're focusing on that last domain, the principals are able to make some determinations on evidence that some of the teachers, that the teachers will provide to the principals regarding domain four.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
But we're currently monitoring what the teachers are supposed to turn in in regard to student contact right now, and what, you know what I mean, like, where do they turn that in? Does anybody know the answer to that?
Yes, so, couple of comments. The evaluation model that the state mandated a few years ago is not a one-time event. Once upon a time, teacher evaluations happened at the end of the year, and there'd be a few walkthroughs throughout the year, and a teacher observation, and then their evaluation. The model now is based on less about evaluation from a summative standpoint, and more about continuous improvement and coaching. And so the reality of it is, all of our administrators have been engaged with teachers all year long in continuous improvement. And there were some, in some cases, before spring breaks, and teachers were on improvement plans, working on areas that they needed to improve, and so there, there has been some action taken in the, in the, on a case-by-case basis to help teachers improve, and they've had opportunity to respond to those improvement expectations or not. So that's one aspect. The other is, with regard to distance learning, we're, we're not doing virtual walkthroughs per se, but we are charting and monitoring how engaged students are, teacher by teacher, class by class, student by student, so we know very accurately at this point which students we've been able to connect with, either digitally or through paper versions, and which students initially connected and began to fade, and which students we've not been able to engage at all, and some of what Mr. Hernandez was talking about through social services and our counselors has been a system-wide effort to respond to students that we've not been able to connect with at all. And at the beginning of this past week, of the ten thousand, two hundred or so students, there were roughly five hundred that we've not connected with at all. And so we are attempting and will continue to persist in connecting with all students. But we are monitoring on a daily and weekly basis at the campus level the interactions teachers are having with their students, and what we're hoping to do as time moves on is improve the quality of those interactions. And that's something we're learning more about as we experience what it's like to work with kids digitally and families, and the challenges that they have on their end as well. The agency is working diligently on a on some resources to help us do a better job with that, because all of this is very new. But at the end of the day, teacher evaluation, which is what we're talking about here, or staff evaluation, this is really talking about evaluating all of our staff. I think the big idea here is that we've been evaluating staff all year through really less evaluation, more coaching, more identification of strength areas and areas of opportunity for growth, and we've been providing support and resources and training, and then monitoring that and adjusting along the way. And then ultimately, at the end of the year, everybody would have gotten a summative evaluation that puts all that together, so we do have a lot of evaluation information on all employees. But in order to formally put in their file a summative evaluation without having them be at school since spring break would not be fair in, in many, if not all, cases. And so that document exists, but the statute that requires that, that final piece, bringing it all together formally in their permanent file due to this particular circumstance.
Mr. T, one little question. Isn't there a deadline when all evaluation should be completed? What was, I mean, are we, did, did we all follow that?
Yes, there's, there's several deadlines, and you may be referring to when some folks have to be notified before, if, if the intent is to non-renew or terminate.
Yeah.
And that window is passed.
Okay.
That communication did happen in the appropriate timeline. As far as evaluation timelines, it depends on the employee's position, and Ms. Sanders, if you want to speak to the timelines or different classifications of employees, feel free to do that.
Yes, sir, so the timeline for our paraprofessionals was April the tenth, which of course was last week. For our teachers, the timeline, the deadline for that is May the fourth, so that's approaching quickly, so of course, with that timeline, the waiver would come in at a good time. For our administrators, the time, that timeline is first in, in June.
Thank you so much for that affirmation.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Mr. Tuskano, how many, you said five hundred students we haven't been able to get in contact with?
It was about that, and as we were tracking Monday. Ms. Fuller is on the call as well, and those numbers may have changed as we've been monitoring week to week, and if we haven't updated since Monday, we'll definitely have an update this coming Monday, but Dr. Fuller, I don't know if you have any additional numeric details that are more current than Monday?
Good evening, I do not, right now, we have been working with principals this week on their collection and the, of students who are participating, and I anticipate that next week we will have accurate numbers, if, if we want to share them then.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller.
Thank you.
And I, and I'll add to that, Ms. Barantos, in this week's regional superintendent's conference call, that was a topic that we were discussing, the local media has been pretty interested this week about how districts have been faring with regard to being able to connect with children in their respective districts, and it seems like you know, anywhere from eighty-five percent to ninety-five percent of the student population is what districts are able to connect with. We're at about ninety-two to ninety-five percent, but there's varying degrees of engagement, of that ninety-two to ninety-five percent, we have some that are really engaged on a daily basis. We have some that are intermittent, and we have some that have faded, and some that we haven't, you know, outside of that, the other, other five percent, we haven't connected with at all. So we're, we're working on not just the five percent, but on all of them, and increasing the degree to which we're able to connect and provide meaningful work for them, and that they're completing that work and interacting with us in a progressive manner. And so we're, we, we just deployed that this week as far as a very intentional effort to now see the degree to which we can improve what kids' engagement is at all levels on that continual, because we've got two weeks of data now. Teachers have had a couple of weeks to really engage and to, and to try all the things that they could try, and then pass on to their counselor and principal when they're unable to connect, and get other folks in the system involved in supporting them all the way to student services, which again, is you know, and maybe some of the more extreme cases where we're really having difficulty in, in the families, or the children having more difficulty because of their circumstances. So we'll just keep you posted, week to week, as we hopefully improve our ability to impact kids and families, and hopefully their degree of engagement in the teaching and learning process in, in this distance format.
All right, thank you, I apologize, I, I meant to ask also about our special ed students, what percentage have we been in contact with, because that's another, obviously, concern with just not only the stress on the parents, you know, with them having to work and provide for them, but just there's so many factors. Do you have a percentage of those students?
Nina Pugh, our director of special education is on the call, and I'll let her comment in a minute, but I will say this, that is one area that the federal government has not waived at all. The degree to which the IEPs for all of our children, as they are written, need to be implemented regardless of our, of our current circumstances. Now, there have been some developing options for providing services virtually that we are obligated to provide through individual education plans, and that's enabled us to do an even better job than physically connecting, which is very difficult in this time that we're in with social distancing, et cetera. But Ms. Pugh, if you want to comment on that, feel free.
Mr. Tuskano, this is Shannon Thor, I don't, Nina on the call, I'm sorry.
Okay, do, do you have some, some additional information?
So I can share that in regards to that, we are collecting those numbers as well. It's something that the special education teachers and department meet about each week. They provide one-on-one contact in addition to the general ed teachers, to the students specifically. In coll, they collaborate if they're in the general ed classroom with their teacher, but they also go up and above to work with them, and to coordinate with parents about how they meet the specific needs of those students in this very different learning environment. And so what they've done is work with the parents to the extent possible to customize what could to customize what could that look like and provide that support. Some of it is via hangouts and digital, some of it's over the phone, depending on, on the needs of what the students and how they're working with, with their parents. But we are, I don't have exact numbers to give you.
You're, you're, you're fine, thank you for that. I know, I've seen it firsthand with, you know, Jeff here at home reaching out to his students, so. I was just, yeah, whenever you have a chance, I know you are super busy, and I thank y'all for everything that y'all have done, but I just would like to see the numbers.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Thank you, Ms. Sanders Fuller, for that information regarding the, the students and stuff. So we'll move on, Mr. Toscano?
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, I recommend board approval for submission of the TEA waiver for T test, T pass, and alternate, alternate appraisals for the 2019-2020 school year.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent for the approval of the submission of the T waiver for T test and T pass and alternate appraisals for the 2019-2020 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Victor Garza, do I have a second?
Second.
Back from Mr. T Bryant. Any more, any questions or anything before we vote? No? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. So before we move on to the consent agenda, I would like to open it up for any trustees that have anything to say regarding the certain circumstances we're in as far as district-wide and stuff like that. Me personally, I would like to thank all the staff and admin, and everyone that's involved in getting the meals out to the students and the ECPD. Everybody's doing a fantastic job, really going beyond their normal jobs and call of duty to make sure that everybody, all the students and everybody's taken care of in this district. I'm not surprised at all, because we, we have such a fantastic district, and the people in the district that make this, all this run are just the best of, best of the best. So just, I just want to tell everybody, thank you, and I appreciate everybody that's involved in making sure everybody's still taking care of the students, and the students are getting their needs. So I just wanted to open it up to anybody else that has anything to say.
I second that, Mr. Massengill. I truly appreciate every single thing that every one of y'all has done. Again, I had no doubts that y'all would hit the ground running. I personally went and thanked our child nutrition staff at Highland Forest and at Legacy, because I just, that was one of my main, not one of my main concerns, but I know a lot of our students just go to school to eat, that's the only meal they get. So I just appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. Y'all have worked so hard, and I just want to also make sure that y'all are taking care of yourselves and not, you know, overly working. But again, like Mr. Massengill stated, I'm not surprised at all that y'all hit the ground running. So thank you again, from the bottom of my heart.
Yes, I'd like to say something as well. I recognize that these are unprecedented times, and yet, our response through our district is not unprecedented. I mean, we are able to, to rise to any occasion, always in the same, in the loop of what, what goes on, and, and all of the things just that continue to make this whole district such a great district, and, and to make all of us, those in the community as well, very proud. And so basically, I just want to say, I want to encourage everyone. I know on, on various days, this must be so overwhelming. And, and from the mental health aspect for all of us is extremely important. We're doing things that we never thought we'd have to do again, and yet, do, do before, but yet, we're doing it with pride and with excellence, and people are reaching out, and you're just seeing across this whole nation how people are, are giving, and their hearts have been softened in ways that probably we've not seen before. And so East Central IST is no different. And so it just gives me relief. It, it helps me to, to be able to say, I know, no matter what goes on, that this school district is going to be intact. This is, school district is going to get the support that it needs. This school district is going to take care of everyone in the community of the school district. And I just want to also make sure that we all take care of each other. And that means everybody, as we say, all means all, it's so important. So whenever we get back to some place of normalcy, and I, I shudder to use that word, because I don't think we'll ever be normal the way we did, we were. And that could be a good thing. I think we are learning a lot, and we're improving a lot, and we're reaching out in ways that we didn't know that we would have to, but yet, because of who we are as a district, that goes out. And so I just wanted to, just, I had to say this, that I'm just so proud of what we've been able to accomplish and will continue to accomplish, and thank you so much.
That's all, I'd like to also thank Mrs. Toscano. He's making sure that all this happens. He's making sure that our hourly workers are getting paid. He's making sure that our, uh, district is a family, that we're making sure that everybody has what they need, lunches there. And he's keeping the board updated, almost dated, on what's going on in the district, what's going on in the city, what decisions are made. And so I really appreciate that. Also, all the administrators that are making sure that our students are getting the laptops, and the teachers are reaching out to them, and I know they're reaching out to them, but I have two granddaughters that are, they are, they are, the teachers are contacting them daily, and they have, the district have provided laptops for them. I know they're doing that for everybody, so I know we're in a great district, and I want to thank everybody. Mrs. Toscano, you're doing a great job.
Same for me, y'all, I'm not going to take a long time, but thank you for everything you're doing, Mr. Toscano, and all of the administrators and everybody. I know that y'all are just working day and night to make everything happen, and I'm very grateful and thankful, and so is the community, because there's a lot of talk going on about how great everybody's doing. So thank you so much, and make sure that you are getting rest, like Claudia said.
All right, so we good? Everybody done?
Yeah.
All right, so would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda? No? So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Who's that, Monique?
Yes, your banker.
Your favorite person.
It's an A.
Yeah, well. Do I have a second?
Second.
Claudia Barantos? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Move to adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We are, we have, you have consent. I would like to thank everybody, and I appreciate it. I know this is a different way to have a meeting, but thank y'all, and I think it went pretty flawlessly, so.
Yep. Thank you, everybody.